The Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 27, 2011. Item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, October 18, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Motion approved.
Aye.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are resolutions D through I. Motion approved and adjourned. Which item?
The item dealing with the setting of the Act I.
I think it was G.
G.
The Act of the held over until your next meeting.
Which is going to be October 14.
Okay, so resolutions D through I with the exception of G, which is held over till October 14. Motion approved and adjourned. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the... That special liquor license, is that what you were talking about?
No, the tax levies for the schools that were...
Okay, I'm sorry, I was...
Okay.
Thank you.
Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 27, 2011, and item B, approval of the claim submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, October 11, 2011. The complete listing is on file in the office of the County Clerk Comptroller. Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. The consent agendas are item A through M for a total of 13 items. Any questions or comments on the consent?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. I was looking at I, the special designated liquor license for Hy-Vee on North 156th Street. It's asking for this license to be granted through, from Tuesday, October 18, 2011, through Tuesday, November 1, 2011, from 6:00 in the morning to 1:00 a.m.
I think it's the stocking.
What's that?
Is this the one to stock? Can someone come forward? This is the request you're asking for to get in there and stock?
Yeah, the STL is just a request for us to get in there two weeks prior to opening of the store to stock the merchandise, and we need to have a license on premise to do that.
I see. I thought you were holding some wild cocktail parties over by the...
Pre-opening party. Nope, I'm sorry.
And we didn't get invited, see? The parties are classy. Get that commercial out. Thank you, gentlemen.
And this infomercial, send pay for it. Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Again, it's items A through M for a total of 13 items. Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
Last week when Kathy Goodman was at the podium, I made some remarks that I think were pretty harsh to her, and I am moved by a letter I received anonymously. I shouldn't say this, but I read all of my mail, even the anonymous stuff. But it's a letter that really hits the point, I want to read it to you, it's short. "Mr. Boyle, I have enclosed two copies of this letter so you can read the second one after you tear up this copy, and also enclosed is a napkin you can use to wipe the egg off of your face. I have not signed this document simply because I have relatives that do work with Douglas County and given the behavior I just witnessed here, or excuse me, witnessed, have every reason to believe you are capable of exercising retaliatory actions. By now you are certainly wondering what this is all about. It's about a bully, you. I just watched the September 27 County Board meeting on television. You should be ashamed of yourself for berating Ms. Goodman as you did. Your actions just scream bully and are inexcusable. If another county employee had reacted the same way, in the same tone, and with the same disrespect toward another employee, they would certainly have been or should have been subject to disciplinary actions. I know they would be in my business. Now that you have publicly berated her, I suggest you publicly eat crow and apologize to her for your irresponsible and unprofessional behavior. How disappointing." And the letter really hit home. I wasn't feeling comfortable about what happened, and when I got this letter, I thought this really confirms how I feel. And so I am offering Kathy a public apology, and I'll be talking to her, she's not in town just now, but I'll be talking to her personally and offer my apology. It was a little over the top, maybe a lot over the top, and so I apologize to her without any further excuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle, and I always say it takes a bigger person to admit when they're wrong and apologize, and to do it publicly, you've just stepped to the top, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the letter, she's right on point, he or she, I assume, I don't know who it is, but I appreciate the letter.
Yes, very much so. Thank you. Public hearings, the first one is catering license for Legends Patio Grill and Bar, Inc., DBA Legends Patio Grill and Bar at 6910 North 102nd Circle. Action can be taken today. Again, this is for a catering license. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone speaking against this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, is what's the will of the board? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next public hearing is the public hearing to permit discussion and the presentation of testimony regarding recommended revisions to the Department of General Assistance Primary Healthcare Network Guidelines, and this comes from General Assistance. Good morning, Jan.
Good morning, Chairwoman, good morning, Commissioners. Jan Pelletier, Director, Department of General Assistance. The statutes of the state of Nebraska that mandate that you provide the polyleaf programs that we do through General Assistance also require you to review the guidelines under which we operate those programs every two years, and this is the year that we are doing that. Yesterday, we had two public forums, one in the morning, one in the evening. We sent notices about those forums, as well as this public hearing, to over 1,900 individuals by fax, email, or enclosure letters to the residents of Douglas County with whom we do business. We have had the current guidelines and invitation to participate in this process available on our website, all the Omaha Public Libraries, the Sheriff's Office, the Blue Lion Center on 24th and Lake, the city clerk's offices in Bennington, Waterloo, and Valley, and your Commissioner's Office, as well as in the offices of the department. With that, I'm not sure if there's any other public comment today, but that would be the background for the hearing.
Are there any, anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Okay. Refresh my memory, do I just keep this open then? This item? Or do I just move on? Because we're not taking it today.
Sorry, I forget to turn my microphone on. It's going to be back on for next week, for action? Is that right?
Not for two weeks, isn't it?
Okay.
Chair Borges, typically what has happened in the past is that the public hearing would be closed, and then when the proposed guidelines that'll be effective January 1, 2012, are prepared, and they again have been available for public review, there will be a second public hearing regarding those guidelines. This hearing today was strictly for the purpose of garnering any recommendations on policy changes.
But there's still opportunity for people to do that when we bring it back to vote on it, correct?
Correct, on the revised guidelines, right.
Okay. Then, Commissioner Kraft?
Jan. Two years ago, we had a very large influx in the demand for service. What is happening with demands on your department from the need for assistance?
The demand continues to be very steady. As unemployment extensions have run out, we're seeing more demand from that sector of the population. We are seeing actually more people who do not have a health barrier to employment but have worked or would work if work was available. Has been kind of the shift. A lot of years, the majority of our clients are people who are awaiting a federal disability determination. We still have quite a large number of those individuals, but it's really been exceeded lately by people who just can't find work.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Therefore, the public hearing will be closed on that issue. We'll move to the committees, first one being the Finance, Commissioners Morgan and Kraft.
All right. The Finance Committee report is as presented. The second item is a resolution that Mark and I worked on and had input from other Commissioners, and basically what it talks about is that, of course, we have exemption regulations for properties that are tax exempt, and what we're requesting is the Douglas County Commissioner that we support, encourage a thorough review of all requests for property tax exemptions for 2012. We think this is imperative, and we need to begin to really take a look at those. Mark, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I... Well, yes, we want to take a very close look at it. We want to make sure that everything that is tax exempt truly meets the strictest of criteria.
So I would make a recommendation that we approve, and all of you have that resolution and have had it for the past week or two, I would make a motion that we pass that resolution as presented, and I will second it.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I support the intent of what you're doing, and I'm sure I'm going to end up voting for the resolution, but the concern is why we haven't done this before is, this is a lot of work we're asking of the assessor's office, and frankly, the county attorney should be included in that process, it should be them working together on this. But unless the county board, unless we are willing to back up the work that they are doing and stand up for it, if they come and say, not the Boy Scouts, but some good group will use Boy Scouts, that they own this building, but it really doesn't qualify as being tax exempt, and here's why, and we say, oh, but we like the Boy Scouts, we'll give it to them anyway, then they've just wasted their time and offended other people, unless we are going to stand up for what they come up with, it's a waste of time. The green belt was a waste of time for them to go through and try to figure out who qualifies for green belt because we refuse to stand up for anything. And this is going to be another example of that, that I'd prefer they focus on their core responsibilities.
And if I may, PJ and I discussed that exact situation, which took place before either of us was on, and we do intend to back him up. We are in a position where we need the revenue, and we should not allow people to be taking advantage of the situation, such as some of the abuse of the green belt classification. So it is our intent, but we cannot control the rest of the board. Am I correct, PJ?
Well, we'd like to control the rest of the board.
Good luck with that one.
We've talked about that, and we feel that would be a problem. No, I plan to support the Douglas County Assessor. I know this creates more work at a time when he has plenty of work, plus some other challenges on his plate, but at the same time, we think it's imperative that we begin this process, and as far as I'm concerned, I plan to support the assessor's recommendations on this issue.
Commissioner Boyle?
I agree with what Claire said, I mean, it is that we do have to be willing to step up, you know, for example, if you come in and say that the Douglas County Republican Headquarters is no longer tax exempt, you know, we're going to have to bolt out of conscience. No, very seriously, I do agree with what he said, and I do remember the green belt, and it was, you know, kind of an unusual situation, but I agree, and I really applaud you for bringing this forward, because we roll along with these exemptions, and, you know, I know that there are some, I was involved for quite a few years with a low-income housing nonprofit, and they paid taxes on all of the houses that they developed and rented out and so forth, and then I would see other organizations that would have not paying taxes on homes that were used for the same purposes. And so it's difficult, and the assessor's got his hands full with it, and I think it's a time for us to look at all of those, and it could be difficult, but I think it's important we do it because the taxpayers deserve it. I mean, they deserve to know that when we're giving, somebody's getting an exemption, they have a right to it. So I thank you very much, I'll support this.
It ties in with the SLS tax exemptions that are granted.
Right.
And, you know, we just cannot keep, we cannot afford to keep giving government away. That's what it nets down to. So yes, thank you. And I did second the motion, did I not? Yes.
Call for the question.
I'll be supporting the resolution as well, but I don't think I can sit here and just say I'm going to support every recommendation that the assessor brings, because I haven't seen what they are yet. But secondly, Mr. Morrissey, is not that a statute that those are supposed to be looked at every year anyway, so whether we do it as a whole or whether we do it by category, we're supposed to be doing that anyway. So my next question would be, are we planning on bringing those forward by category, or how is your office currently looking at these? I know we did the green belt all in one full swoop, will we be bringing those back?
Mike Goodrully, Douglas County Assessor's Office. We generally receive the bulk of the property tax exemption applications in the month of December of the year prior to the year they're seeking the exemption. So we'll get the bulk of them in prior to December 31 of 2011, seeking exemption for the 2012 tax year. Then there is a window that begins February 1, where we can bring our recommendations to the board. So I don't know, I doubt we're going to bring you, you know, all of the applications at once, it'll probably be stages, I don't know if it'll necessarily be by category or not, but throughout the springtime, we will be bringing you our recommendations on exemptions.
And the file that I asked you about, and you said you sent to Candy?
Right.
I'm still trying to locate that.
Do you need us to resend it to you?
Yeah, just so I can give it to the rest of the board, so that we can see what we're looking at.
I encourage the...
Okay, thank you. No other lights are on? You guys done?
I think we're done. Mr. Goodrully, one thing I'd encourage, we have discussed is certainly, and I know you look at all of them carefully, but the medical exemptions that we see out there, which is a tremendous portion, whatever we can do to assist or be available to discuss, we're open to talking with you, or Roger, whoever's involved, at any time.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
You bet. Thank you.
The other item...
Did you want to vote on it?
Yes.
Did you want, are you done now?
Sure.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I had a question for the county attorney, there's a, what I see happening as a result of this look at nonprofits and all those for the tax exemption, is that people will go to the assessor and say, I'm entitled to it, and then they'll be told, well, you have to go to the county board, and then I see the county board sitting here hearing appeals. First of all, do we have, I'd like to ask you, do we have the authority to hear appeals from this section, and if we don't, what can we do to prevent it? I mean, it's difficult when someone in the government has to say, no, there's no appeal, or you can, you know, go to court, but I don't want to see us flooded with a bunch of people coming in here saying, you know, I'm exempt and presenting papers and everything, I just don't want to see that happen.
Well, I think, and I might need some assistance from the assessor's office as to how this works, but if they already have an exemption, and then through the investigation or looking into their status, the assessor determines that they're not entitled to that exemption, then the assessor would make a recommendation to this board, or the Board of Equalization?
Mike Goodrully, Douglas County Assessor, Ms. Carlson, you are absolutely correct. We would get the applications, we would, as we review them, put them on the board's agenda with our recommendations for hearing in front of the county board. Those tax, those organizations can come in and have the opportunity to, you know, make a presentation, just like anybody else who is on the board agenda, and ultimately, the board votes thumbs up or down on our recommendation. After that, then appeal rights attached to the tax equalization review commission.
Well, I'd like to see the, does the statute actually say that the appeal is to the county board of commissioners?
Well, it's really not an appeal, I mean, it's the determination of whether the organization is exempt or not.
Well, you make that determination.
You make a recommendation. Ultimately, in '77, I want to say it's 202. something or other, 2.03, ultimately, the board makes the determination at the county level.
But does it say that?
Yes.
The Board of Equalization?
Yes.
We make the determination?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a disaster. I mean, I think the county assessor should have that authority, I mean, what this does to taxpayers is bouncing all along, I mean, I just, I don't know, I would rather see it end with you. I think, you know, it weakens your authority, for starters, I think you should be the ones to decide whether to look at the law and the five points and whether or not somebody's qualified, and it should be your job.
Well, it is as the legislature decrees, so...
Okay. What was the statute, '77?
It's in the, it's like 202 or 203, somewhere in that neighborhood, give or take a section.
Thanks. I believe it, you are a walking encyclopedia of statutes, I appreciate it.
If you do this enough, you better have some of it still.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure. Anything further?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
The last item...
Motion passes.
The last item, Madam Chairman, is the RFP on the printing matter with the DOT.com that you brought to the board, to pass a resolution as far as moving forward with the RFP on that. So questions about that, or maybe you have some comments?
No, I just appreciate the time the Finance Committee gave Mark Gradel from .com to come and present, and the board was supportive of moving forward with the third option, which was the RFP process, and so we just followed it up with the resolution, because the committee doesn't take action, the board does, so I would make a motion to support the resolution.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Thank you for giving us the background of this.
Motion passes.
And may I have a moment regarding this? If anyone wants to read the backup documents, to find out what it costs to operate a computer, I think you'll be, not a computer, a printer, I think you'll be surprised at the actual cost of printing, maintaining, the electricity, and so forth, and this is part of our cost savings, cuttings. We, the Finance Committee and the county board, are looking for every way we can to shave pennies off where we can, dollars off where it's appropriate, and programs, if necessary. And there are a lot of programs we don't want to touch because they save us money in the long run, but we're looking for any that might have additional savings that we can implement. So again, I ask the public, along with the commissioners, to give us ideas. Tell us what you know about county government that we are doing wrong or can do better. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I just want to put my two cents in, this is something I've been pushing for quite a long time, and I'm really glad that we're finally doing it. I think it can lead to a lot of efficiencies, and, you know, there are places where you're making a copy, and you can turn over to the left and see another copy machine, so I think this is very timely. Thanks for doing this.
Well, there's also the water bottle issue, if you remember, and I don't know if we were successful in reducing the number of canned or bottled water dispensers and containers we have in the county, and we should do a follow-up on that, that was last year, I believe, and we should have some numbers now, so we'll need to ask purchasing.
Okay. We'll move to the Child and Youth Services Committee? Or did we vote? We voted. Child and Youth Services?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item, which is a contract with the City of Omaha, this contract is for the Juvenile Accountability Block grant, it's a routine contract, and for the record, does not tie into the current controversy that happened. So I move approval.
There a second? Please vote.
We can create some controversy.
Yeah, not hard for us.
Motion passes.
The next committee is the Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. The legislative issues will be ramping up here shortly, we'll get the letter out today. We do have a quick executive session for...
Litigation.
Pending litigation. Is there a motion?
So move second.
Before we go into executive session, there is a Child and Youth Services Committee at 1:00 in room 903. The Douglas County Board of Equalization will hold a special meeting this Friday, October 14, at 1:00 p.m., and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners does not meet next Tuesday, October 11, and therefore, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 18. And do not forget that the Douglas County offices are closed Monday, October 10 because of Columbus Day. With that, please vote on going into executive session.
Our next meeting is from Friday.
The special meeting is Friday.
Motion passes.
The 14th. Yep.
I think...
Yep. Okay. If it starts counting down, it'll be...
That's great. You admitted.
Chair, second. Vote.